All right, if I could get a motion that we discuss those items that we went into closed session for. One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one one. Performance review of department heads and one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one six. Consideration of investment of public funds.
So moved.
Second.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Abstain.
Alrighty, and then if we could do the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Penn and then invocation led by Councilman East.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Dear Lord, we thank you for your many blessings and ask that you would guide us in all matters. Please grant us wisdom this evening as we conduct the business of our town and may our actions serve to honor you. In your name we pray, amen.
And I'd like to welcome everyone that's here, live and online. Once again, we're sorry we were a little late getting back from closed session, but okay. Is there any modifications to public session? I don't think there is. So we'll start with the Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-three. Observation of National Fire Prevention Week. Someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash four-three. Resolution of Observation of National Fire Prevention Week.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please ma'am?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Alright, well that moves us on to the public comment period. I've got two speaker slips tonight. Once again, I'll remind people that you have five minutes that will have a timer on it just so that you, so you'll see it too. So the first one I have Jimmy Na- Na- Amy, okay, alright. Yes, you just come up here, please, and just if you'd like to give your name and everything.
And address.
And name and address, I'm sorry.
Okay. My name is Jimmy Na- Amy. Was able to, you know, work hard, you know, get enough money to buy my own house, um, by myself. And I do have some concerns about the municipal code according to, um, in reference to, I guess, the aid or assistance, um, in terms of whenever there's like a leak or some kind of damage done for water services. So I tried to be as proactive as I could. Um, I noticed a slight increase in the water bills, um, when I hadn't really, like, at first I thought maybe it was some rate increase or so. I was calling it, um, but then I noticed, well, you know, something seems off. Um, it, it seems kind of unusually high for someone like me who's out of the house working all the time and, you know, just working by myself. When I brought it up, I guess the municipal team is not in charge of any assistance or so. Uh, but I had struggles, um, trying to get any kind of lead in or so for some kind of assistance or some kind of at least information to, um, kind of help me out. Uh, so, uh, you know, the first couple of times I was paying my bills monthly, which I always paid on time in full, um, I, I ended up getting the impression that like, oh, nothing serious, there's nothing wrong. Uh, so it's kind of like I was brushed off. Then I started to notice it was increasing more and more and I'm like, okay, something is wrong. Let me, I guess, try to get a plumber or so to see if they might know what's going on. Um, but it was not as easy. I mean, I'm not sure if anyone else has this struggle, but I, I was trying to do research and looking around. Perhaps this may just be my unfortunate situation, but the person that I had reached out to ended up being very unreliable and costing me more money without doing anything, any service for me. But, um, in the meantime, as, you know, time was going by month after month, I was still trying to approach, uh, anyone who could hear me out about, like, I think something is gonna go wrong. And as it turns out, uh, one of my most recent bills, my bill turned out to be four hundred fifty-five dollars. And so, um, I did get noticed that there is such a thing as a leak report. So they can kind of warn you, like, if there's something on record. However, um, I was not contacted because apparently it wasn't an actual leak. There was some situation where it was kind of consistent for one day, but not for a full period of time. I'm not sure exactly the details, but, um, what ended up happening was, you know, I had that huge, I just stumbled across it the month that it was issued to me. And when I asked what my options were, uh, basically it was just you can extend the dates by just a few months, but then you actually pay more because it's ten percent, which, I mean, I am fortunate to have the savings, you know, for this, but, um, I'm pretty sure that's just my situation. I'm pretty sure many residents don't have that option. Um, and it is kind of very costly for me. You know, I worked really hard for that saving. But, uh, the other option would be to, um, you know, just find a plumber again. And, you know, in addition to paying the plumbing bill, they would kind of come back. And what I would find is that my bill would be reduced only fifty percent because of the code, um, for the water leak portion, but nothing with the sewage portion. So basically I would just save fifty dollars, but still pay four hundred and that could happen month after month. So I, I really think something should be done to kind of add on, um, to the reasonable part of eighty-six, um, in the municipal code, section eighty-six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question?
Sorry, I'm just a quick question, has the, so is the issue still unresolved? As far as, have you figured out what's, what's going on yet?
So, uh, I called them to ask my options. They said they could talk to the town manager. The town manager sent it back to them and they said, well, a lot of places are doing something similar here. So, um, you know, yeah, those are the only two options that you have and it is ongoing. I'm still trying to get someone to make sure, like, I haven't received my new bill, but, um, I'm expecting it to kind of be down because I've had to do my own methods to try to save water. And, you know, I think it will go down and then maybe by that time the plumber will have found the issue and, you know, it will go down to a little bit normal, but I don't know how many thousands of dollars I'm gonna lose in the meantime.
So you have had a plumber try and find a leak and they were or weren't able to find one?
So the first one, um, like I said, they were, they didn't even show up. They wasted my time, they kept making excuses and, um, I had, partially maybe that was my fault because I was trying to do a lot with that plumber. Like, I, I figured it wasn't just one utility issue, maybe it was something more serious. So I wanted them to do a big project on that. But, yeah, they, after three months, they hadn't done anything. So I had to be like, okay, I have to look for someone else. The new plumber gives you a quick fix, but it was just a basic fix that, um, I'm not sure if that's the issue uh, cause, uh, it sounds like on paper that it might be the issue, um, with my toilet. But, um, you know, I had, I believe not long ago, I had recently had another plumber for another reason look at my toilet and fix that issue. So I'm still not sure what the actual issue is. And, um, I, I guess I'm not sure what the bills are gonna look like in the future. So I'm still kind of in that process to find out what's with my next bill. And I basically was going from like fifty dollars a month to seventy dollars a month and I'm just like, I don't know.
That would make me think that there would be a, like, you should see a leak or the, um, we have the leak detection, well, I mean, it tells if it's something running twenty-four hours, is that correct? Like, a constant?
Right, I understanding, and I've spoken with you, I'm Ron Bircham, the town manager, and I spoke with you and then I did refer you back and I explained to you that you could have a leak adjustment, but only on the water and only after you provided proof that the leak had been repaired. And I don't believe you've ever picked up this application. So I'd ask you to take this with you tonight because this is what you will need in order to apply for that adjustment.
Okay.
But my understanding from, uh, the finance people is that they did give him some tablets, uh, to put into the toilet, which is one of our standard activities because then you can see if that's where the leak is occurring, that it didn't appear immediately, but after some hours it did appear. So their assessment, and of course, we can't go on town property to make those judgments, was that it was a leak. The policy, which I've asked Olivia to pass out to you because he referred to it, um, as section eighty-six and, um, I have to look that up myself, so I know you all have to do that as well. It does say that we can make an adjustment, uh, but only one, uh, every twelve months and that it can only be applied to the water if in fact the water did go into the sewer line. And, and that's different than, let's say, somebody has a leak, um, in their yard and the water, uh, it doesn't go into the system, it's absorbed in the ground and we could make an adjustment, uh, for sewer. But the standard adjustment, uh, is for water only and we're certainly willing and prepared to make an adjustment when we have the proper documentation. It's unfortunate, you know, that this continues and that you're having the difficulty in getting a plumber or a reliable plumber, I might say, uh, to look at the issue, but we have to have proof that the repair has been made. Some people are able to make that repair themselves and others have to hire, you know, a plumber. And either we'll suffice so that if you go out and buy, uh, materials in order to make a repair, we'll take, you know, that, uh, as evidence that the repair has happened as well.
I imagine that code is written as far as the, if it goes into the sewer line is because the town is still paying for that.
That's correct, we still have to treat that water, yes sir.
That's a pass-through cost, basically.
But if it shows up that it's in the yard and, I mean, if they prove that it was in there, then we, and that was all water going through.
If it demonstrates that the water did not go in to the sanitary sewer system, then we could make an adjustment on sewer. But given that the little bit of evidence that we have or the anecdotal evidence is that it's internal to, uh, the home, then it means it's going into, uh, the sanitary sewer.
Right.
And I, you know, I may be in the weeds here a little bit, but what, I mean, four hundred and fifty dollars a month is, it's gotta be three times a normal household bill, something of that nature.
That's like eight times my normal.
I mean, that's a large amount of difference in water flow, right? So would it be possible if you had a plumber at the house for us to coordinate having somebody read the meter while, you know, us having someone there that could read the meter while they were turning water off to, you know, valving off water to figure out where, you know, to, to stop a leak coming? Is there a way that we could assist in a way? Cause that's, that's a huge amount of water pumping out somewhere. Right, I mean, so that's, we're not talking about finding a leaky faucet, I mean, I just want, if it's possible.
Water leak in a toilet that runs continuously will give you very, very high bills very, very quickly. You don't think it's a lot of water, but it is.
Well, I agree, but I, I think it sounds beyond, uh, I mean, you, that'd be.
Yeah, I ran a hose overnight one time and it was a thousand gallons.
It should be noticeable enough that you could turn the water off to a toilet and the meter would stop spinning at that rate, at some level, you know.
We also have a few, uh, meters that we can temporarily install that gives you a read every hour for twenty-four hours because we'll have people who may say, it can't be in my house, you know, cause I'm not there. Uh, and then when you start looking at when it happens, it is while people are in the home as opposed to the times that, you know, they may be working or out chopping or something.
Right, well, I understand, I understand your concern, I'd be just as concerned, but if, if you don't find the leak, it's gonna get, the story's gonna get worse, you know? And, and, and so, uh, anything that we could do along the level of maybe offering the assistance of putting that meter on the, the house or, or maybe coordinating when you've got somebody there to look on the interior of your property.
Once he has a plumber there, you're saying?
You know, that kind of thing, we'll work with it in every way we can, but the, that number's gonna get bigger.
Yeah, I know, and, um, the one recommendation that was given to me, which, I mean, I didn't mean it as this, I have no other choice, was to just shut off the whole valve and then only use it anytime I'm using the facility, uh, like turn it back on, which.
I, I, I had that problem too when I had to fix a toilet and couldn't get a part for a while. And it's, it's terrible.
Like, I don't know how I'm gonna hold it. But, um, I did actually have a plumber do something, like I said, so, um, you know, whatever they did was two hundred eighty dollars, so I'm hoping it fixed the problem. But, um, you know, I still kind of, the way that it was set up where, I don't know, maybe it could have been prevented or, you know, maybe I could have had like a normal, which I guess, I'm not even sure, a hundred dollars a month would be a normal bill, but, um, for someone like me at least. But, yeah, I said, I feel like it's still, the way the code is written, I lost a thousand dollars, you know, without using any, like, I didn't get any extra service, like, I know that's how it works, but, um.
Are you saying that the plumber has very recently for that two hundred and some dollar amount made a repair?
Uh, they did a basic, uh, repair on the toilet, so.
Very recently?
Yeah.
Then you need to complete this form so that we can do something to.
I wasn't aware about that.
Well, this is the form that's required, so if you'll, make sure you take that and you can attach the plumber's receipt or bill so that we can see, you know, when it was repaired, you know, cause it will have a date on it and the cost. We'll be happy to make the adjustment that we can.
They'll be giving me a receipt for that, um, for having paid that much. But, um, like I said, according to the code, I think the calculation that was made by the team that you had sent, um, said it would reduce the four hundred fifty dollar bill to like four oh five. I feel like the issue, the crux of the issue, the main issue probably wouldn't be resolved necessarily even for me, but any resident.
Does that fifty percent go, is it just for the most recent month? Or does it go back to the point that it's visible that there was an increase?
I think it's, uh, what I was told is for four months.
Four months back?
I'm not sure who gets to choose which four months.
It's the four-month average.
Okay, yeah, four-month average.
So you go back, so it should capture this time when the bill started going up.
Right.
But, um, yeah, because the sewage is the most expensive part, that part of the code where none of the sewage gets assisted at all. I mean, I, I understand the town is paying for it, but.
Yeah, we, we actually get bill, we get a bill from somebody else for that.
Yeah, and I know that you have no choice. You have to rely on someone else, kind of like how I have to rely on a plumber. But I feel like, I don't know, there could be some system put in place. I don't know, even, I would not have any problem if I were to opt into something where I pay a little extra each month to put in some kind of reserve fund for these kinds of things because a five hundred dollar month plus a three hundred dollar plumbing bill plus who knows what else might be and or who knows how many high payments I have made already. I feel like, uh, that would be much better for, uh, some kind of protection, you know, some kind of, um, warning at least. So I don't stumble across a thousand dollar debt.
And, you know, Ms. Bircham, you had mentioned, I know that we have the, the leak detection meters, which I've actually received a letter in the past that said that I had a continuous, water continuously running out, but I believe it was twenty-four hours, is that correct? So you mentioned that there may be some other option available regarding an, you know, if it's, you could check it hourly. Is that an entire meter change or is that just a device that we can?
Actually, it's, we replace something on the meter.
Okay.
To take that record and then it reports it to us. And we do attempt, uh, but can't always eyeball, you know, every bill.
Right.
Um, that if we see suddenly a spike, we'll try to contact people to let them know, um.
Well, where I was, where I was going with that is it, obviously it's up to the homeowner to detect and I've, I, I feel your pain, I, I received a huge bill one time and it turned out to be a, you know, it's anecdotal, but it turned out to be a, a toilet that was running intermittently and then once it stuck on, it, it just went way up.
Amazing.
It's amazing.
How much water is lost from a toilet, it really is.
However, if the homeowner brings it to our attention, I think, I don't know what our, what our current process is, but maybe it's something that we could look at within the, the finance department that says, here are your options, we can do A, B, or C. And maybe it is, for instance, a leaky toilet, they're inter, they can very much be intermittent. It's not gonna get picked up necessarily on a twenty-four hour check, but it might get picked up on an hour check. So, so if there were something that we can do, and I'm speaking completely out of ignorance right now because I don't know what the options are, but apparently there's a, there might be a device that we could plug in with, with minimal effort, if that's possible and the homeowner initiates that. I mean, it might be, it might be good to kind of give the homeowner some direction. Is, you know, hey, I think I've got a leak, my water bill's going up and then, okay, well, this is an option, what we might do. And maybe that happens after the initial visit by the plumber and the homeowner shows that and then we, but I'm just trying to, you know, it's a means to an end, you know, obviously we wanna help you, we don't want you to get a thousand dollar water bill, we, we understand that.
I feel the code is written for a good reason, um, but it's, I guess, written in a way assuming that everything works properly and correctly. But like I said, they, I wasn't informed because it wasn't a twenty-four hour, I guess.
Yeah, and those, those are always tricky.
There's nothing in the code then, you know?
Right, and while the town can't, and I'm not advocating that the town, talent can monitor, you know, everybody's water usage and, and pick up a spike, um, but I do think maybe there's an opportunity for us. It, it, it may not help you right now, that, that form will help you more than what I'm saying right now, but, but maybe, maybe that would give us an opportunity to do some, put something in place where we can help in the future.
Well, I'd be happy to look further into the situation, as I say. I did speak with the gentleman, I did talk to the finance people, they contacted him immediately after that to tell him the process and they actually gave me the form in the event the gentleman showed up tonight cause I believe he told them several weeks ago he planned to come to the next council meeting. So I had that available because that's the first step for us.
Okay.
Um, and if you will get that to us, in the meantime, I'll be happy to pull the records and see exactly, you know, what notifications and how long this has been going on and see what was offered and what wasn't offered.
And according to, you had mentioned the tablets too, which I've forgotten about that, that's, that sounds like that's a first, that was a first step as well.
And. Yeah, I, I believe that was either the previous month or maybe the two months ago. However, I guess, uh, I needed, I guess, maybe here's my ignorance, I, I guess I misused it the first time. So I didn't see anything that resembled a leak based on what I interpreted the instructions on it, which the instructions was just like three lines on the tablet itself. Um, but then luckily someone was able to eventually tell me how to use it. And so I think that maybe based on that, it did seem like it was something toilet-related. So I was able to get that information to at least give something to the plumber so that the plumber could just randomly do it and stuff that may or may not work. So, yeah, I am hopeful that the plumber can fix the issue. I just honestly still think that something with the code probably can be expanded on or amended or so for these kinds of situations.
Alright, well.
You should be getting, if you haven't already, a bill in the last couple of days so you could tell if there's been an impact.
Yeah, I, I'm going to probably right after this check my mailbox.
Yeah, because those went out, uh, last Friday, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, fill that out and then we'll see what we can do too, but then we'll go, yeah, yeah, you take it back down there, okay? Thank you, thank you so much.
Darlene, while you're looking, can we check to see if there's a procedure for, I mean, with that much of an increase, if there's any procedure for letting somebody spread their bill out over?
I believe that was offered, but let me.
Oh, was it, okay, well, it, it might be worth just, you know, making, cause I didn't, I just looked at the ordinance, it didn't say anything about that, so.
Alright.
But then the first time someone fails to keep up the payment plan, we go back to square one.
Right.
But I, I will check the, the particulars and pull the account tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
It was offered to me as well, um, but, uh, when it said it was twenty-three months.
Okay. Sure. Okay.
The next one I have is Angel Slaughter, um, if you'd like to come up and then give us your name and address, please ma'am.
And so when I went out, I said, well, where is he? He was over the cliff. So I said, well, you had to hit him pretty hard for him to be way down there. So my godson had to help her get down the hill to get the dog and then I put him in a towel and wrapped him up and then when I leave, he took him to the last of his breath. But I don't know, it's right there, one twenty hours, he's right there in the curve. And you, as you come straight up the hill, well, cursey bottom, you come straight up and then my house is on the curve right there and then people come speeding down through there. And there's another house across the street, but she has a great big piece of brick in her yard. So if it was a car that go in her yard, it would hit that brick before he can get to her house. And our neighbors, Sid and her, they have dogs. And it was just a concern because that was, he was, he was my fur baby, fur baby. And, um, you know, I'm just sad, put it out there, something that we could do to slow the traffic down coming up around Case Line. I said he coming in a line around the curve and the curve is real narrow. Usually the time when I go around it, I have to slow down so the cars will come around me and then I go up. But that was what my concern was.
Okay. Or, or a child too.
But he did make his way back to the yard and then when I took the flashlight to look at the side, I said he can't take it to the hill.
Thank you ma'am.
Can I just ask you, was there any posting of the curve with a lower speed or anything? Okay. We'll take a look at that tomorrow morning. And I'm sorry for your loss. I know those dogs are your own babies. I have several.
They're part. Yeah, they're family. Yeah, they're family. All right. I have no other speaker slips. So if I could have someone make a motion, if you'd look at your September twentieth, twenty twenty-two minutes and someone make a motion to accept them.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two minutes as written.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Quants?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All righty. And then now it's time for the council comments. So Mr. Penn, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mira. Don't have anything.
All right. Mr. Dawson?
The only thing I had actually related to the speed conversation too, you know, we were talking about coming in on ninety-nine and, and coming in on, on Bob White Boulevard into town. But when you come in over, over the mountain into the ballpark there, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't it drop from fifty-five to thirty-five?
Thirty-five. I drove it today because I, in my remarks, I will tell you the status of our speed reduction project.
I was just thinking, you know, that, you know, we, we said coming in on ninety-nine, it was inappropriate to go from fifty-five to thirty-five, but we've got that on the other side as well. So anyways, that's all I have. Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Well.
Absolutely.
You don't have anything, right?
Our parade's coming up next Thursday. I want to be in a fire marshal fix, but everybody should come out and enjoy it. It should be a great night. Ms. Hale actually texted me and said that the love sign, thank you very much. She was the one about a year and a half ago, her husband come up, was talking about your love sign over there, wanting one for the town of Pulaski. So she sent, not, not this Ms. Hale, it's Barry Hale's wife, but all the Hales are related. So she's a bit, she said, thank you very much. That's very nice. So that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Reese?
I don't have anything. Thanks. Only thing that I have, I've had some people asking about, they've said they've had some potholes here and there, and they were told that there was no more paving this year, but I find that hard to believe because we patch constantly. At the bridge going towards Mount Olivet and then Brookmont, right as you're going, like after you turn out Brookmont, right near the trailer park, there's the bridge there and there's like a huge hole there too, apparently. I have not had time to ride out there and see it, but, but that's.
We're doing a sweeping later this week or early next week of the culvert area on Jefferson that we had to make a repair because I drove that this morning and was concerned because with all the rain, some of the gravel had moved. So I know we do have somebody coming back in, but I will, you said Brookmont and what was the other one, Mr. Mayor?
Mount Olivet, the bridge, when you're going toward, before you turn onto Brookmont, so right there, I guess that's at Calphease.
I'll ask them to take a look at those.
Fifth Street, South Two.
I'm sorry?
Fifth Street, which one? South Side.
Oh, Southeast?
Yeah, Southeast, probably. It was a water line repair, but I think it's all been run out.
Oh, yeah. I was actually just on Henry Street and there's two there too. It looks like they were.
But you all said you had no comment.
Well, I just forgot about it till he mentioned it.
See what I started? Yep. Anybody else have any potholes now? But I want to say thank you because they did fix the one on Eighth Street that I had asked you about and it was, was done. So, and then I got complaints because they fixed it because now traffic is running on it again. So.
Can't make anybody happy.
But that's all I have tonight. So we'll move on to the manager's report. So.
Okay. Well, and I do have a lot for you all tonight. Lots of things are happening in the town. Mr. Radcliffe mentioned the parade, which is next Thursday, starting at seven P. M. I was asked by the fire chief earlier today if any of you are interested in being participants in the parade. They'd love to have you ride on the equipment. So if you'll just let me know if you want to be involved, he will handle that.
I would like the ladder truck again. I liked that.
I know you do. I knew you'd ask you. I knew you'd want to. But Mr. Radcliffe, you're interested as well. Is that correct?
Oh, I used to get in the fire marshal vehicle.
Okay. Next week is Fire Prevention Week, which is why we have the parade on Thursday and the other jurisdictions have parades on other days of the week. And we have a number of activities that are planned for that week. We have something going just about every day. They will be at the two elementary schools on different days. They'll be at the Faith Blue and Red Lunch that I'll mention to you in just a minute. They will be attending Head Start and they will have toward the end of the month, a Halloween event at the Radcliffe Museum, all as a part of the Fire Prevention Week. I hope that you all will see the opportunity to participate in one or more of those events. We did receive notification last week that the town, the town has been approved for what is called a Section two oh six, aquatic ecosystem restoration. This is a totally federally funded program. It's the result of several studies that have been done about Peak Creek, both by the Silver Jackets and the study that was done, you remember, the gentleman's name was George. I'm trying to remember his last name. Greg, you'll remember him, who came and gave a report. And they're looking at how they can look at and amend anything, including that bridge that has been discussed. And they will be coming for a visit soon to sit down with us, but we did have a Zoom meeting with the Army Corps representative as well as their staff last week as an introductory meeting. They will do a feasibility study first and then we'll go to design and eventual construction. But it has been earmarked with federal funds. So it normally, this particular program has a matching requirement after a certain dollar threshold. We'll hope that the federal money continues to be available as we go through those very steps. But that's been a long time in coming and I know everyone, including the friends of Peak Creek, will be very pleased. And in fact, they were informed of that in a Zoom meeting earlier today on another project. So that's coming along finally. I did mention that one of the events that the fire department will be participating in is the Faith and Blue Weekend Event. And they will be having a luncheon at which they have several food trucks that will be in attendance this coming Friday between eleven A. M. and one P. M. And it's an opportunity for people to just come together. Our police department will be actively engaged, which is why we have kind of extended the name from Faith and Blue to Faith and Blue and Red. And they're hoping that people will just come, interact with each other. It is open to the public and I hope that some of you will be able to drop by to be participants in that. It's really just a fellowship opportunity, but we're pleased to be a participant in that. I think I mentioned to the council previously that we have embarked upon a sponsorship of new businesses with our chamber where they have a discounted rate if we participate. And I'm pleased to say that we now have four new businesses that have become members of the chamber and we're assisting in their first year of membership to try to get them actively involved in chamber events. You mentioned the love sign. It probably had the best participation of attendees of any ribbon cutting event that I've been to in quite a while. It's a lovely sign. It took over two years in its making, but it's placed, I think, in a very attractive location that will allow lots of photographs of people to be taken with the love sign. And I have been working with A. E. P. They have gotten permission and they will be installing an outdoor floodlight directly across from the site so that the love sign will be lit up in the evening. So we're very pleased that that has happened. Was trying to get an answer for you as to when next week we will have the ribbon cutting event for the mountain bike park. It will be next week. I do not have the details as to the date and time, but we'll get those to you right away. And that is something that we've been answering, request for information on Facebook for weeks now. Everybody is looking very eagerly, eagerly to that event. We have completed the parking area and have gotten the signs that will be installed later this week and have given final approval to the company that installed the ramps. We, at the planning commission level, have been working for over a year on an update to the comprehensive plan. And they had a very interesting work session, actually two of them, where members of the planning commission had discussions about what future uses of land should occur in our town. Not just looking at where is everything positioned today, but what you'd like to see in the future. And it was such a stimulating activity that I would like the council to agree to come in at five thirty at your next meeting for the closed session and at six o'clock to have a work session, I'll put tables down here, and you all with maps and little pieces of paper that represent different kinds of activities, try to plan the future of this town. And that will be the final activity that's necessary for us to complete the comprehensive plan. So I'll ask you to come in at five thirty. You'll have a fun exercise at six and then hopefully your regular meeting at seven.
Will there be snacks?
I can see you're looking forward to it.
Sounds like homework.
The enthusiasm that's there. You will, you will enjoy it. I promise you. It's been really very, very exciting to watch the planning commissioners get engaged. And the last item, and I will be putting this out in the form of a press release following this meeting, but I wanted you all to be the first to hear it. And I'm going to read to you what the press will, will say. The town council voted on September the sixth to change the speed limit to thirty-five miles per hour throughout the town. Staff immediately met with V. Dot officials to advise them of this decision and requested that V. Dot reduce the speed in the county on Route eleven North and South and Route ninety-nine as they approached the town limits because it's fifty-five miles an hour in those two parts of the county. V. Dot agreed to a speed reduction on the county roads and will be processing that change, hopefully in the near future. Effective tomorrow, October the fifth, a reduction in speed sign will be posted at the corporate limits with a new forty-five mile per hour. Starting a hundred and fifty feet further, a thirty-five mile per hour zone will be implemented after a second hundred and fifty feet. We have to space and give people time to slow down. So that's why we'll first have a sign that says, reduce speed ahead, then the forty-five and then the thirty-five. And they have to be spaced a hundred and fifty feet apart according to the specifications. The forty-five mile an hour signage will be replaced with a thirty-five mile per hour sign as soon as V. Dot makes its changes. And V. Dot, when we met with their representative, was very supportive, felt like coming off of the ramps, particularly on ninety-nine, was too fast at fifty-five. So I hope that we'll see those changes very, very quickly. The speed limit throughout the town will be thirty-five miles per hour unless otherwise posted as there are certain neighborhood streets and curves that are currently posted at twenty-five miles per hour. The town recognizes that this lower speed will take some time getting used to. However, the safety of our citizens is a priority. Accident data supports these actions and we hope citizens will comply quickly. So those signs are up. They have been bagged and Public Works will be unbagging them tomorrow morning as soon as they arrive at work. And we'll hope that people understand and will make the best effort to comply. It is going to be a change. Change is not easy for a lot of people, but we believe this is the right thing to do and to do it in a progressive kind of way. As I said earlier, I did deliberately drive up the mountain this morning early to see what signage there was on it and was pleasantly surprised to see the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit once you hit town limits. So in that case, we have a few thirty-five mile an hour signs already out. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about that or anything else. I believe I sent to the council earlier the fact that we had some citizen concerns and some accidents too at the intersection of Randolph and West Main. Looked at that again. We'll be removing some of the stop bars that seem to perhaps have people stopping too far back to see. And we have put four-way stops at that intersection. And we will have police looking at those intersections, making sure that people comply as quickly as they can. But right now, it's getting people used to the new speed limits. We're not interested in writing a lot of tickets. We're interested in people reducing the speed at which they travel through the town.
I did notice, and I think that's, it's going to be important, first off, the bike park where it's being cleared looks really good. I just want to say that. But I noticed coming into town this evening, there were a couple of cars sitting just off the edge of the road there next to the bike park and they were in the grass working on their bike. And I think it's going to be important that we get that slowed down quickly because there's just going to be a lot of, I mean, it's a, it's a great space. And the only other thing, because there could be a lot of extra traffic, obviously, and, and just seeing young people right off the edge of the road was a little concerning to me because that's, right now, I'm sixty-five all day long through there is what I'm guessing. If I had to put a number on it.
Well, it is fifty-five currently.
Right.
Until you start up the hill and then you see the first thirty-five mile per hour sign.
So that reduction is absolutely a good thing. And then I did notice, because I was looking for the parking area to see if it's done and I had a little difficulty locating it. And I know it's still kind of under, you know, under development there. But if there's any way we can identify exactly where that is, because it's not real obvious at this point. It may be when there's, when it's done.
We have ordered, and hopefully they'll be in by Monday, some gates to put there that will further define it. And then we have ordered a sign that points in the direction of where the parking lot is, you know, and that will say mountain bike park or something like that with an arrow for those that are unfamiliar. But I would have to tell you, based upon the number of calls and contacts, I think everybody's been watching that park for some time and it's not going to have a problem. In fact, you know, the parking area may suddenly be full, you know, beyond what our expectation is. I also understand and just heard this today, that we have people who regularly fish in that area and were parking on that property before we started the mountain bike park activity. So we may have some of that as well, which is another reason why we really need to gate the property because there will be times that the weather will be such that we don't want people, if we've had a whopping rainfall. We won't want them on the ramps. So we'll be posting both an internet as well as a Facebook account where people can find out, is the park going to be open today, you know, because of weather conditions or not.
Some of those expert jumps that are on that thing are pretty scary looking.
Well, the gentleman that we're installing it, we're riding it with ease. So obviously, they're the pros.
Yeah. I bet you they made it look easier than what it was.
They really did.
I had someone ask, and it was funny. They said, well, if the town's going thirty-five, what's that mean for up where there's, where it's marked, you know, in the residential where it's twenty-five? I said, it's marked twenty-five. It will be twenty-five.
That's why we stated in this release that.
Unless otherwise posted.
Because there are, and there are some curves, as we know, the one where we had the accident that caused the power outage when you all were having a meeting some weeks ago, that's marked twenty-five because of the curvature of the road. And so that may be the case even in non-residential areas, which was why I was asking the young lady if there was a sign on that particular section of the road that she was concerned with. And we may need to do that there too. We'll take a look at that in the morning.
All right.
Oh, and just one other thing I just thought about. I did have somebody compliment the town on the, the, the way it looks now in the downtown, you know, after that building's been gone and you can see across the creek and see the skateboard, skate park. So I did hear some very positive comments about how, how much better it looks and it's amazing. It does look a lot better. I know I bring it up, but I look at it all the time and I'm thinking, wow, that's, it just made a world of difference. I can't even.
We've had a lot of compliments.
Oh, it reminds me, I actually drove through that section of Randolph and West Main on Monday morning because I'd heard there was, I just wanted to look at it. And it did make me think that maybe whenever we switch out, I know the plan is in most of those intersections that we're going to take down the, the traffic lights, that they're going to be four-way. But I think it might, it just seems like everybody was kind of like, I don't know what to do. was kind of like, I don't know what to do, because there were like a few people there at the same time, and I think just having, just going four-way, even if we plan on making it eventually a two-way, uh, it seems like the safest thing to do is just make everybody stop, so that nobody, you know, rolls through and gets, not that it's ever going to prevent all accidents, but it seems like just to give everybody a breather and get used to a different way of driving.
Interesting, because you have several streets in the immediate, just outside the downtown that have two-way.
Yep, but everybody's used to it, that's the thing.
And then the one that's the primary route, you know, that is straight through, um, but part of the complication at Randolph and Main was the fact that the signal heads themselves could not flash but one way.
Right.
Uh, which I think is what caused some of the confusion.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, the choice of which was the, the two-way versus.
But this is, on Monday, there, there wasn't, all the, the lights had been bagged, and I was there, and there were, like, somebody just sat there, just like not doing anything, and, and, you know, let other people go, and eventually, and, and I think this, they were just confused, um, you know, and so I think it just, it seems like, just let everybody be confused together.
Let me get Mike to post a article about four-way stop intersection etiquette.
How it works.
There is a protocol to that.
Yes, a refresher course.
I guarantee you, most people, most people would answer those questions wrong.
Some of the problem too was that people stop because they are, it's not that they necessarily don't know what to do, but they're on the phone, or they're doing something else, and they'll wave somebody on, and then waving somebody on can be the worst thing you do, because it may be counter to the traffic, you know, you're being, you think you're being nice by waving them on, but something else is happening that maybe not, is not in your visible area, so I, I do think the four-way is what we probably should have done to begin with, but we've rectified that now, uh, and we'll certainly keep that in mind as we do other intersections, because this is just the first.
Yep.
Of several that we will be doing, and we'll be making other changes as we move toward two-way, particularly on Third Street, for when we do the water line replacement on West Main, um, so stay tuned, there'll be more.
Was that all?
Oh, yes, but then, Mr. Mayor, when you read this thing.
Yes, I, I've already wrote, I've already wrote it. I did. I did. All right, with that, just a reminder of the future council meetings, uh, October 18th, 2022, closed session, 5:30, um, and public sessions start at 7:00, so with that, I have nothing else on the agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.